So if you'll just bow your heads with me for the invocation. Heavenly Father, we thank you for our ability to come together and discuss the business of the city. We pray that you would help us to make the best decisions we can make. We pray for your guidance. We thank you for the residents of the city and the community that is represented here. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. I think I mentioned, but I'll say it again. Kyle is in a training for police officers in EMS for county active violence, so he won't be here tonight. But we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask that you'll join in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shirley, would you take roll call, please?
Yes. Mike Connell?
Here.
Chad Fuller?
Here.
Mindy Yelviv?
Here.
Larry Lamber?
Here.
Bob Porter?
Here.
Steve Wallace?
Here.
Here.
He lives here.
Here. Looking for approval of the agenda?
I move that the agenda be adopted as printed.
Second.
Second, or excuse me, moved by Chad, second by Steve. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Looking now for reading and approval of the minutes of our previous meeting.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the April 20th, 2023, regular meeting.
Second.
We have a motion from Steve, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Do we have anyone here for pre-approved reports or presentations tonight? Public comment? Anyone here for public comment? Communications? Do we have communications, Shirley?
We have, just a reminder about the yard sales. I just gave you a little line about that. May 19th through the 1st. We also have the flyer for the very, the citywide cleanup, May 22nd through June 2nd. Dumpsters will be up at the DPW and bring your items to the DPW. I think that's it.
Okay. There is some, Kevin, I'll just ask you to help me with that. The 30-yard roll-offs that'll be up by the DPW for people to put stuff in for the citywide cleanup. There's a sign that will be there that says what they cannot put in there, correct?
Prohibited items.
Okay, prohibited items. So they'll be available for people to put stuff in. And if those three get full, we can get more because we have available to us through the calendar year, 12 roll-offs. So people can use those. But please, please be aware of the prohibited items. We don't want to abuse this nice gift that we're being given. We're not being charged extra for these. I would just report also that the SEDP, Chiwasi Economic Development Authority, not here today in our room upstairs. They had a nice meeting where some students from MSU had done research for a class on Chiwasi County and how zoning and building permits were handled in the different municipalities and at the county. And they brought all that information and gave it to us in a presentation today. And it was very nice. It was well-attended. We had lunch and it was a nice meeting. The citywide cleanup Shirley mentioned. And, oh, Devin wanted me to remind you. Devin's working from home, so she's keeping us on track. But she wanted me to remind city council members who are chair of any committee of the fact that she needs to hear from you as to who attends your various committee meetings. So those can be kept track of. And she did provide me with who has reported how many so far. So if you're uncertain whether you've reported to her, I do have this list. You're welcome to look at. But just a reminder that she needs those reported. And... Department had reports. Who wants to go first? Megan?
Hello. First thing I have for you tonight is that I have been working with a grant writer, James Hisam, finalizing the formal application for the COPS Technology and Security Funding. That was the $130,000 grant that we were receiving. So we have formally filed the application. The next step will be them formally giving us the award package. So we're just waiting on the next steps from the Department of Justice. I don't have an exact timeline on that yet. However, James did also notify me while we were doing that work that he is stepping back to his consulting role. He took, I think, a more of a full-time employment doing grant work still, but he'll no longer be available for our services consulting him out. He is available for us to keep working through this process. And if we have questions going forward, he can help us troubleshoot stuff. But that was just an FYI from James. When we last met, I talked about a Consumers Energy program. It was like a grant, not a grant, just an award pitch program. So I filed an application highlighting the ball field here at Jubilee Park. Sorry, Veterans Park. Unfortunately, we were not selected for the finalist. But it's a good opportunity. We'll try again next year. And I may have mentioned this already, but the audit is scheduled to begin the week of August 14th. We have that on this calendar already. Everything will start moving along faster than I wanted to for that. That's all I have for now.
Thank you, Megan. Kevin?
Good evening, everyone. If you remember, many months ago, we had a project going for the lagoons with the solar beet units. We had two of them that needed batteries replaced. So we were able to finally complete that project. When the weather broke, we were able to get out on the water and company come and service those. So that has been completed. We did loose leaf pickup for the month of April. It was for the month of April only. We'll continue to do bag collection and brush chipping throughout the summer. If anyone is interested in looking for the schedule for that, it's available at City Hall. Grass mowing season has started, so that'll keep us pretty busy. We were able to get a signed contract in place for contracting with the Village of Bancroft. We are off to a good start over there. Everything's going smoothly, as planned, so far. The contractor doing the work is already talking about missed days because of the weather, because it's been cold and they can't do coating. But they are doing the prep work and they are underway on that. So I talked to the head contractor today. He told me about two weeks from start to finish when they start coating. So the sooner it gets warmer, the better, and then we can be done with that project. We started doing service line investigation, potholing, on residences on Lamb Street. We started doing that there ahead of the road paving project that's coming. We wanted to identify all lines that could potentially be galvanized, previously connected to lead before we paved the road and we have to crosscut the road. We wanted to get that done before we paved, so that that's all taken care of. There'll be other replacements there, but they won't, they'll be on the right way. They won't cross the roadway. So far, we found four lines that have been determined to be galvanized, previously connected to lead, which are going to be replaced starting Monday and Tuesday. The street project will begin on May 22nd. They told me that it should take about a week to complete. So we're doing good there. And that's pretty much, we're going to continue doing the potholing and service line investigation to complete our complete inventory by 2025. We're planning on doing about 10 a week. Some weeks we'll do more, 20 or so, when we have the time to do so. So that's, that's all I have for you right now. If anyone has any questions, I would be happy to address those.
Kevin, you didn't hear late this afternoon anything from Consumers Energy about the light pole, did you?
I have nothing to report on that, no. I know that they called in a missed dig, so I'm guessing within the next week or so that there should be contract for that.
This is for the light pole at the corner of Main Street and Second Street? Yeah. Okay, thank you. I did have one other thing to report. Mark Faux, the supervisor from Perry Township, and I, Anne Brent, from the SEDP, had a Zoom meeting today with the representative from Senator Gary Peters' office concerning the application for a grant that we sent in for the mutual water project, if you will, that would run water from the city of Perry out into Perry Township into their industrial park. We've submitted three applications for grants. Now, that was our third one. And Quentin, who is the representative from Gary Peters' office, suggested that we have this meeting that we had today so that we could learn what the specifics are, why we keep getting denied. So we had that meeting today, and there were what I considered minor things, but they were significant enough to them that it just kicked our application out right away. So they made suggestions of how we could correct that and perhaps a different approach to our project, which I've talked to Kevin a little bit about and will be talking to the engineers about. And they will open the same 80/20 grant up again in the fall. And hopefully, we'll be able to apply for it again if, if indeed, we have money to support our portion of it. Although, in our last filing, Perry Township had indicated they would pay the 20% because they knew we didn't have any money to do that. So we'll just see how it goes as we make the changes they're suggesting. And I'll report back to you on that. Kevin or I, or both, will report back to you on that when we're ready to apply. And that's everything I had. Moving then to committee reports. Do we have those?
Just a quick notice that the ordinance committee did meet last week and our next, continue our work on ordinance updates. Our next scheduled meeting is May 25th. It's another Thursday at 10:00 a.m. here at council chambers.
Thanks, Larry. Any other committee reports?
The Parks Committee had a meeting. We talked about some stuff. The, one of them is actually on the new business for the park committee event that we came up with. But besides that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Chad? Anyone else? Okay, then we'll move to our presentation approval of the bills.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and payment be authorized.
Second. Motion from Larry, seconded by Mindy. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Moving on then in our agenda, into old business is regarding the report that we've been waiting for in regard to employee health insurance. And Shirley volunteered to lead this discussion.
Well, only if anybody doesn't have questions.
I think you've all gotten a copy of what she provided to us. And that shows a comparison of the various programs available. The last page shows the change from the current rates, both in the health and vision and dental. Does anyone have questions for Shirley? The Blue Cross Blue Shield SB Silver and the Blue Care Network Gold is what we have offered to our employees in the past. And those comparisons are on your sheet. So...
The current renewal.
Yes. So we would be looking to possibly renewing that same offering based on the changes in price that are indicated here.
And the only thing that's really changed is the Blue Cross Blue Shield is going from a 70/30 co-insurance right now to a 50/50. So that's, and there's some other things like the prescription copays and office visits. Everything is basically changing a little bit in that price comparables. Specialists are going up $10, urgent care $10, emergency rooms going from $250 to $350. And everything else that you have to pay after your deductible is, is going to be a 50/50 deal. And staff will still have the same option to go with Blue Care Network or Blue Cross Blue Shield.
But those changes are, changes within the same plan.
Within the plan, yes.
So it's not a matter of changing a plan.
It's not a plan change.
It would be the same plan, just some changes that they've made to that plan.
Correct, yeah. So the first and second columns are what we're looking at, current and renewal. And the third and fourth columns are options.
If I'm reading this correctly, Shirley, the medical portion is going up by a little under 4.5%.
Yes. And that's, I think that is because that they've changed the, to the 50/50 thing, so they're not raising it as much.
So on this one, the Blue Shield one, where it's a renewal, that's what, it basically mirrors the first current one, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then the other two are options that could be picked up with?
Right, if you choose to.
And on the PPO, I don't know why I was on that one, PPO?
Yep.
The network. That's the first two that's renewal. Basically, it just mirrors it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I don't think that one is changing at all. No, it doesn't look like that. So it's just, that one's just an increase in premium.
There's no change in the coverage itself. It's just in the premium.
Right.
So we currently have three different plans.
We have two plans.
Two plans?
Blue Care Network and the Blue Cross Blue Shield Silver.
That's a shield, silver. Okay, so the Pro Plus is not, because it's, sorry, that's confusing. Oh, that's a dental.
Yeah.
Oh.
The dental and the vision, they're separate issues, yeah.
And those were just minor increases. What, I think you said like, what, five dollars or something a month? There's something 0.29% increase on the bill.
Yeah. And that's a 31.36% increase on the vision, but...
It's 150, oh, 18, yeah. What's it, 40, 40, something like that?
Yeah.
Oh, $40 a month or something. $40 a month more.
That vision amount, wow, on the renewal, 31%. With the excellent dollar amount on this. $500?
Yeah.
Roughly.
That's for the year.
He's looking here.
$160 per year, per month.
Yeah. It was 121.32 per month. And now would be 159.37. Right. So there is a difference, yeah.
$38 roughly. Almost exactly 38.5%.
Yeah. Any other discussion?
I move that we approve both healthcare plan renewals with Blue Cross Blue Shield SB Silver $4,000 and Blue Care Network Gold $1,000 to employees for the 2023, 2024 fiscal year and to authorize the clerk to sign the same on behalf of the city.
Second.
We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Larry. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you for getting all that together for us, Shirley. We appreciate all you're doing. The, under old business, there's still the possible adoption of zoning ordinance amendment 379 and possible adoption of ordinance amendment 380. We are not able at this time to act on those. We are waiting for the meeting, or I forget what the term is called, but for the court to look at this. And I think it's scheduled for May 18th. So our next meeting, I think, is May 18th. So I think it might be prudent to just move this possible action to our next meeting. And so do no action taken tonight? And move them to our next meeting in hopes that we can know how to move ahead. So that's what we'll do, Shirley. We'll just do no action taken on those two. That then moves us into new business, park committee event approval. Who wants to speak to this? Chad, Megan?
Megan, Chad?
She can remember a lot better than like...
So at the last committee meeting of the parks, we're trying to brainstorm ideas of ways to get people more involved, not just in park planning, but in the use of our parks and what kind of facilities we have available. In the proposed budget, we're suggesting putting in a new playground at Veterans Park here. So we just thought hosting a summer event, kind of like just a family fun night, informal, would give us the opportunity to talk about the improvements we're trying to make, start planning the seat for the fundraising that's going to have to happen to make it the best project that it can be. And we've been looking at programs through the MBDC that are a crowdfunding platform that would match your funds dollar for dollar. So it just, it seems like a good opportunity to use the parks, try and get people in the parks to use them. The idea would be like a family fun night. We talked about maybe the fire department coming. Hopefully, do some kind of sprinkler setup at the fire truck. I know the library has a library of things. They have oversized yard games. We would invite the library to come, bring their items. It would also give them an opportunity to showcase their library of things. So if all is approved and the council agrees to the committee hosting this event, and this would be a committee-hosted event, not a city-hosted event, we could start reaching out to service groups in the area, maybe the F Cafe, local churches, theater, Girl Scouts, anybody that might be willing to host some kind of activity to get neighbors mingling in the park. Did I miss anything, Chad?
No.
Okay. And the proposed date would be July...
July 19th.
19th. It's a Wednesday evening, 6 to 8 p.m.
Hopefully, we have great weather by then. Pardon? I said, hopefully, we have great weather by then. I hope so.
Snow.
So we're looking to council members to approve this event, even though it's not city-sponsored. It is on city grounds and it is a city committee that will be sponsoring it, so.
I move that we approve Parks Committee's request to host a summer fun event, night, sorry, that will take place Wednesday, July 19th, 2023, at Veterans Memorial Park from 6 to 8 p.m., which will allow the community to engage with residents, promote upcoming improvement projects, and offer a variety of activities at little to no cost to attendees.
Second.
We have a motion from Mindy, seconded by Larry. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you, Megan. Thank you, Chad. I think it's a great idea. I hope it is well-attended. Next, we have something that Megan needs to stay right there for. The third quarter budget comparison and possible amendments.
Do you have a packet in front of you that outlines budget activity through March 31st, 2023? So that is the end of third quarter. Reviewing activity to date, I do have some suggested amendments. Mostly, it's just to realign some expenses. I came in a little higher in some departments, much lower in others. And then we've also had a couple contracts changed mid-year that weren't budgeted when we set this budget. So the first would be in the general fund, the garbage collection expense. The garbage collection expense will have to increase because there's, I think, two and a half months of our new service contract with waste management, which is an extra four dollars per household per month. So I'm proposing that we increase that line item by ten thousand one hundred and twenty five dollars. And that increase will be offset by increased revenue from utility bills for the next couple months. The other items before that are also going to relate to a service contract change. We had to renew our I T contract. That new contract is about thirteen thousand four hundred dollars annually, and that bill came in April through March of next year. So we had to pay that bill out now, there's not enough funds in the office equipment pool without bolstering the amount of money that the general fund is supporting through the office equipment fund. We pay a drain at large to the county, that wasn't included in the budget, that's two hundred and sixty nine dollars and eighty nine cents. And then there was just a, in the beginning of the year, part of the hospital insurance expense, our medical insurance expense was credited to a wrong department, so we're just moving funds in there to correct that expense, and it won't be there next year. The next apartment that I am proposing, an amendment for, is in Highway Local. When we do the budget annually, the D P W spreads the salaries of their employees, how we think they'll complete their work for the year. And this year, it turns out that they're spending more time working on local roads than the budget had allowed for salaries. So I'm just suggesting that we increase the salary line by four thousand, and that amount will be offset by fund balance. In turn, though, that that means that there's another fund or department that has a lower salary than this budget this year, because the money's being spent in roads and say not sewers. Next up is the drug forfeiture fund, and that's just another proposed amendment of thirty seven dollars and thirty two cents. Chief Box did use some of that forfeiture money to buy new equipment, and it was over the proposed budget by just that little amount. So to be compliant for honor purposes, we needed to increase that budget by that little amount there. And finally, that is office equipment. Because the new I T contract came in higher than it was originally budgeted, we had to increase expenses by about four thousand, and so that revenue would go float in from the general fund to the office equipment fund to offset that expense. And for next year's budget, we have already increased the amount that the funds are supporting to office equipment to cover that shortfall. Any questions?
Good job, Megan. We appreciate your explanation, I do anyway. Any further discussion or questions for Megan regarding this third quarter budget?
I move that we approve the third quarter budget comparison amendments as presented by the court.
Second.
We are.
Yeah, we're like.
We have a motion from Bob, seconded by Mindy. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes, thank you. Moving on to possible approval of a recommendation from the planning commission for the master plan proposal. Megan or Larry, do you guys want to talk about this, or?
I can talk about it, and Megan can fill in the blanks if that's okay.
All right.
As I mentioned at the last meeting, we had, at the planning commission, gone out with an R F P to four potential suppliers, we had three respondents that provided the quotes. The planning commission has met and reviewed those quotes, and actually on Monday evening in our regular meeting, we had a company named McKenna came in and walked through their proposal with us. We found it quite personalized and advantageous, and the planning commission recommended McKenna be the selected contractor pending council approval. McKenna has worked with the R R C in the past, and helped write some of the guidelines with the R R C, and they also have helped other communities, many of which have got their master plans on the R R C website as best practice master plans. And they also came in significantly financially lower than the other competitors that did quote. For all of those reasons, we're, planning commission has recommended McKenna.
I attended that meeting, and I was also impressed by the presentation, not just on paper, but in person. He just did a nice job, answered questions very well, and.
I thought he was honest that some parts of it are going to be difficult to engage the community, et cetera, but he, yeah, certainly has got some ideas in terms of how they helped other communities around the state. One gentleman, not that it makes any difference, one gentleman actually lives locally, McKenna office is based in Grand Rapids, but one of the people that would be on our actual project lives in East Lansing, so geographically is as close to be able to help service us.
I thought it was good, and I've drawn a blank on his name, the secretary of the planning commission.
Bob, oh, the secretary, Nick Jones.
Nick, okay. Nick, Nick doesn't mince words, does he?
He doesn't.
If he's got a question, he asks it. And because their cost proposal was so much less than the others that came in, Nick said, you know, no offense meant here, but answer me honestly, is this a bait and switch? Are you going to pull us in at a slower cost and then start charging us for stuff? And it was an honest discussion, it was a no, we're not, we don't do that. And so I, I thought that was good, that he was not afraid to ask the question that everybody was thinking. So, yeah, it was good.
He was probably because we'd had some of those same discussions before we had McKenna come in, just to make certain that we weren't in one of these scope creep, you know, that's extra, that's extra. He did, the representative did say in highlight a couple of things that if we elected to do some urban, you know, patterning, et cetera, those would be a disincharges, but they would be above and beyond helping us get a master plan updated in place, so.
The contractor's goal, I thought this was really thorough when I read through this, this was the best I could.
And I thought it was really nice that the pictures that they used in this were not just generic. They're actual pictures of various, yeah, of events at the school, and I, they, you could tell they made an effort to speak to us personally.
I have just one question, and it's just nuanced. What is who and what is the steering committee, because I haven't heard that one before.
We haven't defined who it will be, but when we asked that gentleman, the representative, that question, and he said it can be whoever you want it to be, but most communities, it's primarily the planning commission. There may be a couple of other adjunct members, but for the most part, looks to the planning commission and pulling others in as need be.
Okay, because, yeah, list that, then the planning commission, and of course, city council.
Yeah, and.
That's why I just was like, I hadn't heard that one yet, so that's why I was like.
And he also, one of the representatives, one of the planning commission members, having to be Genevieve Catrelle, raised the question, how much extra time is it going to be on the, put on the shoulders of each of the planning commission members? And I thought his answer was, we'll see if it plays out that way, one, two, three hours a month. He said, you're hiring us, if you hire us, we're the ones writing the plan, we need your input, your assistance, but we don't expect you to do the work, organize format, and do all of that.
I'd like to thank the planning commission for what they've been doing with all of this. They, they have been so thorough and so conscientious in their decisions, and, because I've been in on master plans before in the past, and they're just, they're just, they're on it. Appreciate it.
Is there anything we missed, Megan?
I think so, just that it's contingent on those funds from the R R C offsetting that cost.
Good point. Megan has already put together a couple waves of requests for funding approval. Remember when we talked about it before, the R R C, if approved, will provide some grant money to help offset our, our costs, it's a twenty five percent, we have to match twenty five percent, and if approved, they would go up to thirty thousand, which our number would be well under that. But we're just waiting to hear back from the last meeting that, that they were doing, you know, request reviews. The one caution, I think, Megan, you mentioned, is the representative said there've been lots of requests and they're running low on grant funds, so we've got our fingers crossed that they're supported with McKenna, it's just a matter of waiting to hear, did we get, get approved for the funds that we're looking for.
What's our contingency plan?
We either delay, or if they can't give us all of it, what can they give us? We have put in our proposed budget, we've put in more than enough to cover our twenty five percent, only put in ten thousand in our contracted services line in the planning commission, certainly don't want to spend that much. I'm optimistic that we, we do get approved, but realistically, if we don't, we may have to look at a somewhat of a delay.
What does that do to us, to delay, because I think our, our plan has expired, hasn't it?
Our plan's been, unfortunately, been expired.
When I was on private commission, we were working on it, and that was already expired, if I remember right.
We were doing some things to update it, but having formally updated, some draft updates, but they've never been formally adopted. And keep in mind that it does, once we get it in place, it does leverage us a little bit in terms of future grant requests that we might otherwise not be eligible for. If we could cite our master plan, and it's one of the other things the gentleman mentioned, that in the development of a master plan, they would be key to make certain that there are some specific measurable activities that we want to include in the plan. So if we in fact do request grant monies for X, Y, or Z that referenced in our master plan is the desire to do X, Y, or Z.
At the meeting, S E D P meeting, where the students from M S U presented today, they, they mentioned being certified as a re-ready community, I forget the term.
Redevelopment ready.
Redevelopment ready community, and cited how much more funds would be available for someone who has that full certification, or if you're certified, which we are now, you still have to go through steps to get fully qualified. But as you gain more certification in that program, there's more possibility of getting grant funds. And that was also mentioned in the meeting, the Zoom meeting that we had today, that if we're not, if we don't have a fully functional five-year plan, if we don't have certification as a redevelopment ready community, those are things they say you really need to do that, because if we go down the checklist and you don't have those things, you're not going to get any farther. So that, they look at those right up front.
Other comments, questions?
I do have a question, Megan, about this language of the motion. I don't see that it says in the motion, if they use this motion, that it is dependent on the grant funding it.
Because we're not approving the, we're purging before with getting a contract.
Okay.
We're not approving a contract in this, so we're just, I think all that motion is saying is, yes, we can keep moving.
Okay.
We can, we can get a contract from McKenna.
Okay.
Have legal, R R C will have to review the contract.
Okay.
As those just English.
Okay, so it's just saying who and how much, it's not to exceed, but this is not actually approving, spending the money?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So not to exceed, is that the ten thousand, the?
No.
No, it's the.
It would be the contract.
The twenty five.
Twenty five, yeah. Which I think this is really important, because it's so connected to so many other things.
And I believe our current plan is good through twenty forty, but all of these programs say you should be reviewing it every five years, and it just hasn't been reviewed. So technically, I do believe we have an active master plan.
Yeah, it is, it is a forty-year plan, but we have been, as a city, remiss in review and update.
And we're not without, it just needs some attention.
The updates haven't been completed.
I move that we approve planning commission's recommendation to use McKenna to create the new master plan for an amount not to exceed twenty five thousand dollars, pending city attorney's review and approval of an agreement, and then authorize mayor to sign set approved agreement.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Steve. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. In regard to our twenty twenty three, twenty four proposed budgets and millage rates, I didn't hear any questions from anybody about the budget after our workshop. Does anyone have any questions or things they want to talk about now? The, I can tell you the millage rate, and I think you all have that in your notes, is twelve point six four three four, which is just a little bit less. It always goes down, but it's just a smidgen less than it was last year. But is there any discussion about the budget as it was reviewed at our workshop?
I just, I think I have two changes to note since the workshop. The budget you have in front of you does include the planning commission's request for ten thousand dollars in the next budget cycle, I think I've had a placeholder in at two or five. And the other thing I added in was the hundred and thirty thousand grant for the technology and security. So it's both a revenue as a grant and an expense. I gave it in, I think, the one oh one, two oh two? Yep, one oh one, two oh two as capital outlay for the, the match of the one thirty. Other than that, I don't, unless it was just like a small technical error, like typo that I fixed, I hadn't made any adjustments since our workshop.
Only concern I have, and I think I brought up at the workshop, is that I need a, a negative, an over budget budget.
Yeah, no, but it's less than it was before.
I know.
We're, we're trying to get there, but.
Next year, we have no.
We could do it all in one year.
We have no arble money next year, so then it's going to be even more.
Yeah, but we might, we might have some other money, and you never know.
No, you don't, we might not have any.
We're, that's right, who knows? And you're right, Bob, it's, it's just.
My biggest concern is that three percent that we're over, when we have arble that make up the other, whatever it is, I don't know off the top of my head, we won't have that next year. So it's something in roughly forty three thousand over our budget this year, next year, it could be a hundred.
The proposed budget this year is a thirty thousand dollar deficit.
Is it thirty thousand?
Yep, and it does keep us well within the suggested limits for what a fund balance should be. I think when I did the calculation, our fund balance based on expenses should be no less than three fifty? Or four hundred, so between three fifty and four hundred.
Yeah, I think we talked about keeping it at four hundred, and.
But technically, our funds could support the fund balance at that three fifty. And that would cover us in case of emergencies, if we were ever without all revenue for three months, if something catastrophic had ever happened.
I move that we set a public hearing for Thursday, May eighteenth, two thousand twenty three, at seven ten P M at Perry City Hall, on the proposed two thousand twenty three, twenty four city budget, and on the city's tax millage rate for the same fiscal year.
Second. We have a motion from Steve, seconded by Chan. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. So that meeting will be during the city council meeting. We'll just move into the public hearing and then back into the meeting, as you've all been part of that before, so you're aware, but just to let people know. So if you're interested in coming for that public meeting, come for the council meeting, and then at the designated time of 7:10, we'll move into the public hearing and then hear what people have to say and go from there. Moving on in our agenda then, the redetermination of cost for the City of Perry ambulance special assessment district. This is the true evidence that Devon is working from home. She wasn't comfortable with the language that we used to set the new ambulance assessment for this summer bill. So she has changed the language here, and that is in your minutes to see. And it keeps it still at that 10%, but the language is different. So we just need to basically redo what we did. If there's any discussion regarding that, if you want to take a few minutes and think about what it says, feel free. It does show in the language that the current rate is 65 per month per household, and it was raised by 10%, which is $6.50 to $71.50 per unit.
I move that we accept and adopt the following resolution. Resolve that whereas on March 4, 2021, the City of Perry created the ambulance services special assessment district, and the district has subsequently been renewed, and whereas the city is required to make a redetermination of costs for the district yearly at the first city council meeting in May, and whereas the city reserve the right to increase the assessment at the time of the annual redetermination in an amount not to exceed 10% of the costs established for the prior year. Therefore, the City of Perry does hereby determine to increase the annual redetermination by 10% and therefore establish the annual ambulance service special assessment at $71.50 per unit. The city assessor is directed to spread this set assessment upon the city July 23, 2023 tax form.
Second.
We have a motion by Mindy, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now we need to talk about the letter that came from CISA asking for an increase in the special assessment. The way that the city has to do this, we did not have adequate time, once we had the full presentation from the CISA representatives, to act on a new special assessment district, which is what it would take to bring it to the amount that they're asking for, which is $110 per unit. The presentation would be redone by representatives from CISA to explain why that amount is necessary, or why they're asking for it. It would go through the process of the hearings, the public hearings in regard to that. We would hear from everybody with questions, comments, and then possibly be able to act on it, if that is the council's determination, in time to put that new assessment on the winter tax bill. So that, that's the discussion before us, is that something council wants to pursue? Bob, do you have any comments regarding that?
I don't know if we, it's, I don't know if we put it the way you put it, pursue, but that's what Sesa is asking. As of yesterday or today, I've only heard one negative. Municipality isn't a member of Sesa, and I don't know if they had a vote, and they're not doing it or not, but that's all, just only want to have any kind of negative response. And we're going to service all of that area. It's only a portion. Everyone else seems to be on board. And I have, pretty much everybody on the board is a voice. It's kind of like, well, I'm not doing it until you do it, and I'm not doing it until you do it. So everyone is aware of that. But it will, without that $110 amount, it will not be able to sustain itself.
Anybody have any questions for Bob about, about the letter? I think you all have copies of that and the amount that's requested and so on. We did see that presentation that Tim brought in. That was a good presentation, and like I said, we would be bringing him back to present that to the public. So we just need to decide if we're going to go ahead and follow the process to create a new special assessment ambulance district. That's what we need to decide tonight. If we do want to go ahead with that process, I just need your indication that you want us to move ahead with that process.
I think we need to, you know, if we want to provide service for residents, we need to, yes.
Okay, then we will do that.
I think the Sesa presentation that we saw does a pretty good job of outlining the why and, you know, the need.
Okay, we'll get things in motion, and I'll talk to Devon about how that needs to be done, and it is underway. The next item, I was very pleased to hear from Billy. He stopped in the other day. And they have, at the Perry Historical Society, been able to achieve through a grant and private donations, enough money to put a new roof on the McQueen house. Billy, would you like to bring some of that information to us?
I'm assuming that you all have a packet with the information. When you asked the MACC for a grant back in October, there was a small window of opportunity to get some capital improvement money from MACC, so we asked for some funding to replace the old enough home. From what I understand, and there may be more information somewhere on it, the roof is right at that 20-year timeframe. And I thought, let's just try this and see if we can get our first grant under our belt and get that roof replaced before grant money dries up, because we don't know from year to year whether that money's available or not. So we wrote the grant, we got part of it, it was a matching grant. We raised the rest of the funds to private donation. We have, we have Mike Godfrey, Godfrey's Home Improvement. He did, was the original contractor when we started renovations on the home. Done a wonderful job there, and he's worked, I think, very well. He worked very well with John Sauter, and I'm sure he'll be fine with Kevin, any questions Kevin may have. I priced shingles and supplies based on the cut sheet that Mr. Godfrey estimated we needed, and I went around to all the local roofing supply companies. I got it down to around $4,500 with one vendor, and then I approached the contractors at MPC Cashway and Lansing, and they were very, very interested in helping us, so they gave us a tremendous deal on materials. So about two years ago, I had a fellow look at the roof. He was a contractor, he actually came out and flew a drone, which was very interesting, and looked at the roof. He didn't say it was bad, he said it was aged. And their estimate on that was close to $20,000. And as you can see from the paperwork here, we just need your approval, and we'll get this done for around $10,000. And we have the private money to do it, and the grant is in place, we have it in the bank. Mr. Godfrey would like to start on the May the 15th. He said it'll take about five days to complete the project. He, he was very kind, he said, listen, I don't have to make money, but I have to pay the crew. So that's an awful lot of labor for $5,450, and he is such a blessing, and we're very glad to have him as a big supporter of the McQueen house and the society. If I can get your approval for this, I will pay MPC Cashway lumber tomorrow for the materials. I spoke with Kevin about damage to the property during the process. Mr. Godfrey assured us that he will not be using any dumpsters or anything that would be sliding on the yards. He's going to bring in a big dump trailer to get the material away. And Mike at MPC Cashway said, we won't crane it up there, we're going to bring a conveyance out. And we thought we'd set it up out in front to get part of it up, and then go around where the old driveway used to be nice hard ground there, and get the rest of the shingles up. Mike said that's not a problem. Mr. Godfrey said, you give me a time, and I'll have a crew there. MPC is going to deliver at no charge and put it up with the conveyance, but we have to have people up there. So the contractor said, I'll meet them there, and we'll get the shingles up on the roof, get it ready to go. Start date of the 15th, and he said about five business days, so five working days. So by the end of the week, we should have it. And those are, we're going to use landmark 30-year AR, and all the materials that's on the cut sheet is what Mr. Godfrey said that he would need to complete the project. So I was stunned when they came back with the price for material.
You mentioned to me about the gutters. Do you want to tell them what they're going to do?
Well, one of the things that I wanted to be sure that I could get Mike to come back and do the roof is, because he was the fellow who put these very special gutters. We had them made for the homes, so they are as period correct as we could make them. And I was really concerned about someone else taking them off and putting them back on once, because if you look at the home, they're fastened to the roof. And so Mike said, yeah, I'd love to do the job, you know, it's not a big deal. If you notice, when you go by the home, the gutters are, the downspouts come down, and they are quite a bit off the ground. There was two reasons that that took place. One is, we had a crew of people there that were doing tuck point around the foundation, so we didn't want the gutters down in their way. But once this project is underway, we'd like to bring them down closer to the ground. So we'll be shortening the spill over from the roof line about three inches, and we're going to move the downspouts out away from the home about three inches, so they clear the sill plate. Then we'll cut about a foot and a half off the end of the dump outs, and use that piece of material to lower those down. So instead of seeing them go like this, they'll be much closer to the ground and a lot less of a, of a visual problem there. So, and Mike will take care of that while we're there.
Thank you. Any questions for?
I just have one question for you. Do you have any reserve in case they find rotten wood?
We had talked about that. Mike went up and we went in the attic, and when the roof was put on in old four, the original, everything was taken off. So that house has been completely decked, and Mike said, if we have to replace a piece or two, we're good to do that. I did talk, Kevin, and this is something that we never thought of because of what we were doing, is if we have to get it to the point where we're going to pull off a sheet, do you want us to get a permit to pull that sheet from the roof?
Well, don't we have to get a permit for the roof to begin with?
Yes.
Yeah, you should at least get a full permit.
Okay, well, we'll get Mike to come in first, so we can pull the permit.
Yeah, because I, I have to get one from my garage, so you have to get one, this is to replace the shingles. And that will cover any subsequent, perhaps, you know, if there's any rod or replacement.
I will get Mike to, or Lori may come and pull the permit.
We'll wait, we'll wait with fear, Billy.
Okay, so.
So they won't need to bring any money, but they need to fill out the form, yeah? You can.
I just noticed, I, well, it's not even a month permit, it's, I just noticed that they're charging you sales tax, and I believe that you're going to be sales taxes up.
Yeah, I already talked to, I already talked to Mike about the pull, and he said, oh, he said, I didn't think of that. He goes, when you come up and cut the check, I'll adjust it.
I wanted to meet your need.
Yes.
Thank you, Shirley.
Anybody else got a question on?
Thank you for all your work in getting this done, and it was a lot of work.
Wait, it's MPC Cashway. That's, this sheet here, the bid from MPC, that's over $7,000 with the material right there. I'm just so grateful to them, and Mr. Godfrey, you know, he's been with us this whole time, and.
Comes through every time.
Yes, he does. We're really great to have him there. And Kevin did mention a concern over debris, so I will, when I speak with Lori in the morning, or Mike, whoever, I'll make sure they bring the magnet trailer and go over the property when they're finished, make sure there's no nails or anything around the building.
Right, very good. Any other questions for Billy, any other concerns you want to discuss?
I move that we approve the proposal for the repairs to the McQueen house roof, with a stipulation that all financial responsibility for said repairs shall be the responsibility of the Perry Historical Society. The DPW superintendent shall approve any deviation from the contract, and that the contractor shall furnish adequate proof of liability insurance, workers' compensation insurance prior to commencing the work on the project, and turn the paper, paperwork with numbers and writing.
Second.
We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Chan. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you, Billy.
Thank you. I just have one other thing. I, I just want to give a thank you to Shirley and Sue and Megan for getting those historical photos, the copies of the, of the stuff from the state bank, these historical items that you donated to the society last week. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Go Megan. Thank you.
Is there any other business that may come before council at this time? Your public comment? Roy, did you want to make any comments tonight?
Will.
You're, you're going to just observe tonight?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, yep. Any council discussions or observations? Items for our next agenda would be the two zoning amendments, to move those forward. Anything else?
You've got your awards, right?
Yes.
Oh, the awards, yeah, okay. In that case, at 8:07, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you all for coming.